Hey, I'm just chucking it in the air.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. And welcome to the, what is it, September 12th, ooh, happy birthday to my brother, meeting of the Blackstone Millville Regional District School Committee. Please join me and rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We will start our meeting with our introduction of members and Sarah will start at your side.
I'm Cassandra, I'm Vice President of Student Council. Sarah Williams, Blackstone.
Jack Keefe, Blackstone.
Are we coming this way? Sure.
Hi, I'm Jacob Taplin, I'm the President of Student Council.
Wendy Greenstein, Blackstone.
Tammy Lemieux, Blackstone.
Tara Larkin, Millville.
Erin Financo, Millville.
And I'm Jane Reggio from Millville.
Matt Erinworth, Assistant Superintendent.
Jason DeFalco, Superintendent.
And a special welcome to Jacob and Cassandra, thank you so much for joining us. Congratulations on your positions and we're thrilled to have you with us here at our meetings. And we usually start with you guys to tell us what's going on in the world, what is wonderful that's happening at BMR and how we can help you make it even better.
Want to go first?
Sure. So for sports, our football started off their season with a first win. Field hockey has one win, girls and boys soccer, both one win, volleyball, a win, and band received the highest scoring of the entire competition coming in first place over the weekend.
And for me, I have like updates on like the leadership organizations at BMR. So the BMR Student Council has had a very busy summer. We had one delegate attend the National Leadership Conference in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania.
Oh wow.
And we also had four delegates at the Summer Leadership Conference at Worcester State. Freshment orientation this year was an incredible success this year. Our goal was to create an open and accepting environment for the freshmen and to provide them with students that they could go to as upperclassmen when they needed help. And I feel like we accomplished that, a lot of the freshmen said we did. Our first student council meeting was last night and our council has seemingly doubled in membership from last year to this year, which is incredible, and we have a full year planned for events for that. NHS this year has a large number of students as well that are participating, largest it has been in a while. And they have a full schedule for the food pantry and other committees are being set up as we speak to further events for our community. And finally, for the first year, I think like a decade for our school, we have student representation at the Regional Student Advisory Council for the Board of Education and the State Student Advisory Council for the Board of Education. We have two delegates at Regional and one delegate at the State Advisory Council. And the delegate at the State Advisory Council has also been elected as Vice Chair of the State Advisory Council for the Board of Education.
Wow, wow.
Through that, they go the-
Who is that?
Me.
Wow.
Love how you pretend it's this third person, I don't know who.
Congratulations to that person.
Congratulations.
Through that, at Regional, we participate and do things as a Regional to participate with other schools that are around us that are experiencing the same issues. And at State, we work through more broader issues in Malden six times a year.
Wow. Congratulations.
Thank you.
So you can tell us everything going on. Anybody have any questions for Cassandra or Jacob? Go ahead.
Are you both seniors?
Yes.
So how many more days till graduation?
Hundred fifty-one.
Mustn't know that yet.
All right. It's been a long time since we've had somebody who could answer that question, that's great too.
I don't want to interpret that. Wait a minute.
It's a good thing, it's a good thing. It's exciting and a good thing.
That's right.
Planning, that's right.
So speaking of next steps, have you already decided what colleges you're hoping to attend or are you, and what your majors are?
I'm leaning towards microbiology and like Disease Studies and right now my first choice is UMass Amherst.
My first choice right now is Bridgewater State so I can go for elementary education.
Oh, yeah.
Clap for you two. Keep us in mind.
Well, that's great.
Thank you for stepping up and spending time with us this year.
Happy to.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, well, we'll move forward. Is there any public forum? We have public, so, okay. You guys are welcome to stay for the meeting or you're welcome to go do homework, which I'm sure you are, or evening activities.
They had dinner plans already.
They have dinner plans?
Yes.
Oh, did you bring anything for the rest of them?
We can bring stuff back.
There you go.
Enjoy.
So it's up to you, but thank you. And we look forward to you at every meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye, guys.
Great to see you.
Okay. Do we have warrants? We have minutes? Do we have anything else? Field trips or anything like that that's going around?
Nothing.
Nope. So I will move Consent Agenda A if there's no objection to that.
Can we add the minutes from July 8th?
The executive session, oh, regular?
Nope, July 8th, we just held them last meeting.
Yep.
Because there were not, there wasn't a quorum to hold on it.
Okay. So, did we, and that's the only ones we have?
Yes, so August 15th and July 8th.
So would you like to entertain the motion to approve?
I will.
Consent Agenda A with the addition of July 8th.
So moved. Yes, you are.
Okay. Moved by Wendy, second by?
Was everybody here for trial?
Yeah, there weren't, and there's only like five people that can vote on-
Oh, July 8th is Jane, Tara, Tammy, Karen, and Sarah.
Okay.
We can do it.
So abstain.
Just abstain.
So where are we?
Try it again.
Are we on a second?
I got a motion, I'm looking for a second.
Second.
Okay. All right, all those in favor of Consent Agenda A with the addition of July 8th minutes, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose? Abstentions?
Abstain.
Three.
Jack and Wendy.
And Erin.
Right, but I made the motion to accept those.
Oh.
Is that still fine?
That's okay.
All right. I still need to abstain from them.
That's fine. That is fine.
Made a motion of the bundle.
Exactly. Exactly. It's all good. We should have separated, but we didn't, so we're good. All right. Sarah, is there a regional agreement update?
We're trucking along. No real update at this time, we would be getting into some pretty serious minutia if I went in, we don't want to do that, so.
But we meet again next?
Next meeting?
Next week, right?
September 25th.
Oh.
At 6:30, again, open to the public. All are welcome.
Where do you meet?
Here.
September 25th, right here. September 25th, 6:30.
Here, right?
Yes.
Yes, right here. Yeah. Okay. Dr. DeFalco, it's on to you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, good evening, everybody. We're going to open with a couple of very important introductions. If we could ask our two instructional, planning, teaching, and learning coaches and instructional coaches to come forward. We thought that it would be great to take an opportunity to introduce the school committee and the public to our kind of newest members of our team, although not both of them, but it gives me a great pleasure to introduce to you, or reintroduce to most of you probably, Mr. Jeffrey Curran and Ms. Stephanie Lenou. And they're going to talk a little bit about just their work so far and how they've integrated into the district. And before they do that, just a kind of a quick headline. As everyone knows, Mr. Curran's been here for quite some time, serving in a variety of roles at the secondary level, both at the middle and high school. And Ms. Lenou is new to us, and she spent over 20 years in the classroom and as a teacher leader in Mashpee, if I remember that correctly, at the elementary level. And spent a little bit of time in the private world, so to speak, in the private sector, and just could not wait to get back into public education. And so we are very, very lucky to have both of them. And it's a really nice blend of someone who knows a district that's been with us for quite some time and a fresh set of eyes to the work that we're trying to do. So a very warm welcome to both of you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
I would love to share some of the things that we've started doing already and some of the exciting, wonderful things I've been seeing. One is facilitating PLC meetings and looking at data from last year and using that data to inform RTI groups, reading groups, and instruction. And also in PLCs, looking at instructional practices that we are all already doing and compiling a list of those to look at three common great practices that we can look to be sure we all incorporate. And classroom visits to observe these practices that are going on and celebrate them. And then finally, coaching with individual teachers that have, are looking for assistance in a variety of things within their practice. So it's good stuff.
So kind of similar, I've started looking at and meeting with majority of middle school and high school teachers, meeting in a variety of different ways with the ILT teams, collaborating with both principals, collaborating with staff, collaborating in PLC groups with all the subject areas. And the things that we're kind of looking at or that we're working on is we're looking for best practices and we're going to, we've started some of that work and we're also going to continue with that work with looking at STAR data, MCAS data. And we've already started looking at kind of sharing what folks are doing in classrooms, bringing those things to the PLC meetings, analyzing each other's tests, lessons, looking at best practices and kind of having that sharing moment to make sure that either A, to confirm, hey, yeah, that's really great, or have you thought about this? And just in looking at best practices through the lens of what's best for students. I've been in a lot of classrooms so far. And it's kind of interesting that, and again, it's kind of been mentioned that I've been here since the dawn of time, but it's interesting to look at through the lens, or different lens, looking at different classrooms and looking at, through the lens of what the students are doing and just kind of assessing and then having those conversations and questions with teachers. And it was something that now that I've kind of sat in the back of the room a few times, I'm going, you know, I really wish I had somebody that, you know, that maybe could have looked at what I was doing to say, have you thought about it this way? And are you, is your lesson going where you think it's going? And that type of, those types of really, you know, educational questions. And I wish it was someone that, you know, that I had had and it would be really interesting conversations to do that. So I think both of us are kind of on that same plane of helping teachers and, or just, you know, listening to them and seeing what we can do to provide assistance if there needs to be.
That's great. Anybody have any questions or? I for one am really excited to see how this all transpires and I think it's a great addition, so we're excited to see what happens with it and hopefully have great news as we go along. Long progression here.
If I could just add one thing that was really great, we had started our instructional leadership team meetings with the staff this, actually Tuesday, and both Jeff and Stephanie are clearly very active members in both of those teams, helping to drive the work forward. And we ran out of room.
Oh, wow.
The teams have grown to the point where we actually had to go into, one, joining classrooms and pull more desks because we have had an increase of interest in our teachers, which is just, which is huge. So folks are really intrigued and interested in the work, and so that's really good news.
That's exciting. What, go ahead.
How often are the PLC meetings held?
So for the middle, for the high school, it is a once every seven days per subject. What I mean by that, so I'm meeting with teachers every day at the high school. So the math department met today, I will meet them again in another seven school days.
Okay.
Tomorrow, I think it's science or ELA, and then we'll do the same thing. And the middle school is going to be, and they're meeting more in the afternoons, and that schedule I'm not as familiar, but that's coming. But team meetings are things that I can drop in on. I've also, you know, been inside classrooms as well and just, hey, what do you need? And a lot of, come on in and take a look and let's have a conversation afterwards, so those are coming. But daily at the high school, and I think it's going to be similar to that at the middle school.
And then, so at MES, it's weekly, and at the complex, it rotates every other week.
Per grade, by grade or?
By grade, by grade. So it may not be daily, but each grade has a PLC every week at MES and every other week.
Go ahead.
I would just like to invite them back around February to see how this, how the job description has evolved and how it actually flows into the actual work that's happening in the classrooms. So I know it's only been the first few weeks, so I know that, you know, there's a lot of things happening, but I'm just curious to see how this particular, because this is new, how what you're doing is flowing into the classrooms. So I'm thinking February would be a good time to invite them back to see the work that has transpired from this particular job descriptions.
Some student data.
Yeah.
And we'll have a third coach, too, in the Special Education Department.
Okay. Thank you for spending time with us.
Thanks for having us.
We can take a pause with the, we, we're going to pause a little bit on the written agenda and go kind of backwards to our agenda.
Yeah. We just would like to introduce Rep. Mike Soder, who's here, if you want to come on up and-
And thank you for taking time on your schedule.
Sorry, a little bit late this morning.
No, no.
Coming from Boston, the traffic.
Well, with the punches, so no worries.
Summer vacation's over.
Yes, it is.
Actually, traffic was horrendous all summer too, so it's okay. Thank you for the opportunity to be here and as last time, from the last time that I was here in the spring, we had that workout session, breakout session with the different boards in the two towns. This is coming at a great time for me to be here because I just had a meeting with Chairwoman Peish in regards to Chapter 70 reform. That is getting to hopefully an end. We're getting to decision-making time, bills to be debated on the floor. So we're hoping that is going to happen sometime, I think her wish is October, my guess is it's probably going to be November. But, you know, we're hoping that we're going to be able to debate that fairly soon and put some ease going into the next budget season and what you will expect from the new formulations. I'm, you know, you only see what you see, you only hear what you hear. The devil's in the details, I guess, at this point. We'll see where we're going from that standpoint. I will say, one of the big things that I am really pushing, and I know that, I think Dr. DeFalco had met about the Skills Work Grant Program with your colleagues in the area, Exbridge and I know Superintendent Bellingham also very interested in it. The RFP has opened up for that. I would encourage the school district to apply for the RFP. Let us please know when you do that so that we can support you on it. I think the Skills Work Grant Program shows great success, and I think Exbridge has had some great success with it, keeping students in the district, which is very important to your formulation numbers. Some of the things that, in the meetings that I've had with Exbridge and some of the schools that students were thinking about going to, which were really top-notch private schools, decided not to do it and stay within the district. So I think, you know, that, I think they should be commended, that program does that. It creates a whole new vibe for education. I think it creates a whole new sense of energy for the districts. And I would, I can't stress enough that the money is there. I can't stress enough that we will push every angle we can on the skills grant side. And I think this is a big program and I think they're going to even add more to it as the Lieutenant Governor said in the last skills grants that they gave out at Worcester, Worcester Vocational School in Worcester, is that they are going to be looking at revamping this to make it an even better, bigger program. So they see the results are working and they see that the schools are adapting to it and it's actually creating a whole new, there is a void in Massachusetts and a lot of it, I think around here is, we hear a lot of it is manufacturing. There's a huge skills, lack of skills available for the manufacturing sector. And I think those are great opportunities, especially where you have the Blackstone Valley Chamber of Commerce, which represents all of Blackstone Valley, but very active in that program. And very active in supporting school districts within those programs. So you, I think one of the things that I'm finding that we're very lucky to have is we have a Chamber of Commerce, a large Chamber of Commerce, working with our school districts in the, in the Blackstone Valley to help coordinate and partner to make this happen. So I would encourage that. As far as the great news from the budget standpoint, obviously, regional school transportation. I mean, it wasn't 100%, I would love it to be 100%, but we went from 70 to 80 and that took multitudes of years to get there. So I think we're in the right track and I don't anticipate regional school transportation getting, going backwards. I would say that it's probably going to move forward. But I think there was a big push, big push with the House Ways and Means Chairman this year to emphasize the need for regional school transportation increases because it takes a big toll on regional school budgets. This school district, it, out of all of my four towns, helped the most. That will help you the most. It does help with the BVT budget, municipal side of it for the, for the BVT budget, but I think from your standpoint, it will help better from that standpoint. I know DeFalco and I had a conversation about Circuit Breaker, where it wasn't going to quite do what it needed to do probably for the district this year. Of course, that's all tied into students and enrollment and things like that. But in other school districts in the, in the district, it's going to help because they have a large Circuit Breaker budget, you know, budget within that Circuit Breaker. So it's, going to 70% is a great increase for them. It's going to help out tremendously. So it was a balancing act. There was a little bit more of a push because of the surpluses in funding Chapter 70, so I think you saw probably a little bit more of an increase, minimal at best, I know, but at least it didn't go backwards.
Right.
Which they originally were talking about. So that is a, that is a big plus. And right now, the surplus, the state is moving in a wonderful direction. We always lag a little bit in our catching up to where everybody is nationally, but we're actually seeing surpluses. We haven't seen the most recent ones from July and August certified, but we probably won't see August until November, but we should get more of an idea of where July came in. A lot of that, they're seeing it from, obviously, the casinos. They're obviously seeing as more and more marijuana facilities are coming onboard, you're seeing an increase in revenue. So that, along with unemployment, is well below the national average and everybody's paying taxes. And we're seeing that, that that's happening. So it's not for, from a spending side, we're doing basically what we're doing, but, you know, there is increases in spending, so it's not like we're cutting back to, for budget surpluses. And the rainy day funds, I am a big proponent for them because it's not going to last forever and we're going to want to make sure that we can fund throughout the good times and the bad times, and that's what the rainy day fund will do for us. So we just are waiting for the Chapter 70 reform. I think everybody's waiting patiently to see what the final is going to be. Wish I had more, but this timing wise, she actually kind of surprised me that she was so adamant that we're getting close. From a standpoint, from one of the initiatives that I am trying to work on is, I am trying to push more early childhood education. I had a great conversation with Chairwoman Peish about this. And I brought some folks in to meet her, talking about pilot programs that they're running that collaborates both kind of a work for the parents program where the parents, we can get the parents back, give them a springboard and get them off their feet, and also incorporate an early childhood education component to that. So we're very excited about that first meeting. She was very excited about the results that they're seeing from the pilot program that these folks are running and the results. And I'm a big proponent of early childhood education, as you know, from a personal side. I adopted my daughter, so when you don't know the unknowns, you know when you, what you were as a child or your wife was as a child, but when you adopt, you don't know quite frankly what you're going to know about your child's behaviors and what they are going to from a comprehension standpoint. For me, it was a huge investment to do it, but then I started wondering, like, I can do it, what about the people that can't afford to do this? And then I also thought of it from a business standpoint, from a special education standpoint, I think early childhood education is a smart investment early, so we save money on the backend and we know that the backend is very expensive. And if we can focus on the front end, the backend, you'll see a tremendous savings. And the interesting thing about this pilot program that they're running was with 12 kids in Framingham in a daycare center. And just to kind of tell you a little bit what, what these folks did, and I'll say who the foundation is, Tally Foundation, and we have similar stories because their children were adopted and their children have, one of their children have special, severe special needs. It was diagnosed in early childhood education programs. And again, they could afford it and they have the same thought process that I had. How do we, how do we open this up to everybody? Because not everybody can do it. And what they found was, as they were going, it wasn't just as easy as just snapping your fingers and creating a grant program and bringing people and having grants out there for, for children, to pay for children to come into early childhood education, but they also realized there was an economic end of this. And also a parental involvement end of this. And they took all these pieces and put it together where the parents are involved, they also help parents find jobs. And what the pilot program did was it showed results because the parents were involved in their children's performance and their education. But what it also did was those grants that were helping pay for the tuition, they started noticing those parents with the economic piece of it, helping these folks get job placement. They noticed in year two, year three, year four, that the parents were now paying the tuition. So from a state standpoint, you figure out how, how do you make this work from a state standpoint? And I have many ideas on how to do that. We're going to put them together. I think some of it is in the Skills Work Grant Program. I think we have a lot of foundations that we can build a lot of different things, but a lot of it for cities and for towns. If you know how to use the mitigation process through building houses, which Bellingham is going to do with early childhood education, before I left, there's a mitigation program that's going to happen there. They built a new development. Part of the mitigation was to help develop a one-center early childhood education center. When you start collaborating and you start thinking outside of just education and tax dollars, what you do is you bring private and public sector together and you can make it work. So I think there was a lot of great things discussed in that meeting. It's a great start and I know that Chairwoman Peish was pleasantly surprised at some of the thought process that was going into this meeting at first, and she didn't know what to expect. And I'm anxious to see as Chairwoman Peish is, just to keep this pilot program and how we can accelerate some of these other pilot programs through the Tally Foundation. I mean, the Tally Foundation is bringing large companies together to create a tuition-based need where parents can actually go and not worry about the early childhood education in year one and then year two, and it gradually works its way down. I'm excited about it because I'm a firm believer and I will keep saying it, it will save us money. And I, and when I started doing the research on this, even before I became in the legislature, the number, if we do this right, could save us billions on the backend with millions on the upfront. And in the difference, there's savings to the taxpayer. And I think it really can be done without raising taxes and putting pressure on the state and property taxes. But it's going to take a lot of wherewithal to do it, a lot of commitment to do it. But it's going to take a lot of wherewithal to do it, a lot of commitment to do it, and also new way of thinking that a lot of times the public sector isn't eager to do. And, but we'll see. We have a new early childhood education commissioner with a lot of new energy and we're hoping for that meeting. So I come with you, come to you with hopefully some good news and some future.
Yeah.
But I will take any questions that you may have that I can hopefully answer for you.
The pilot program started children at what age?
Well, they started at, Eric, what was it, two? But mostly they had a lot of four-year-olds. So their theory is it's never too late and it's never too early. So there was always this mindset, there's one set of mindset from a lot of professionals in the early childhood industry backgrounds say, you really need to get these kids at an infant stage and bring them in and really start teaching them. When they went through the process, that necessarily wasn't true. You can have the same results in year, even, even having them one year in the program versus three or four years in the program. But I think the program is set up in a way that if you wanted to start early, you could start early. But they're seeing most of the folk, most of the kids in those programs are either two or three years old in that program. Because a lot of times it's, you know, one of the, and I would love to sometime, I could sometimes, I could certainly set up and if I brought Jill Dixon and Phil Dixon, who started the Tally Foundation, if they actually sat here, you could have a whole school committee meeting just talking about this and they would, I think, blow your mind in, in as far as how much thought they had put into this and how you can actually segment it out where they take, they think about the teacher and making sure that the teachers have the benefits and making sure it's competitive. Thinking about the parents and getting the parents involved, because part of the, the whole part of the grant is you're going to work, you're going to become self-sufficient in, in working towards the tuition, but the most important piece of that is you have to commit in being involved in your child's education. Otherwise, you won't receive the grant. And that's the biggest component. And I think we all know, sometimes that's one of the biggest challenges, is, is the parent involvement. And in today's world, where both parents work, I know that's not always necessarily easy. But I think they tried to take that away. They tried to take that out and make it so that it brings it together. And I think they will tell you that it's not, they thought, oh, just easy, we'll just raise money, we'll get all this corporate money, we'll start this grant program, we'll do great. And one of the things they found out, and they'll tell you this, is that they would be afraid to talk to Dr. DeFalco because Dr. DeFalco would come back and say, that's great for year one, but what do I do in year two, three, four, and five? I don't have a plan for that. I don't have district money for that. So they thought that process through. So.
I would never say that, by the way. Go ahead, keep going.
Well, but let's, yeah, but, but it's reality, Dr. DeFalco. It's reality. I mean, that's the problem with, I, I preach this all the time and coming from the municipality side, I always say a grant is as good as it sounds, but if we can't do it in year two, three, and four, why are we accepting the grant?
Right.
Why are we accepting it? Because now you bring hope, but it's not so easy to, in year two, to get that plan up and running. It, it just doesn't work that way. It doesn't make sense and it puts a lot of pressure, undue pressure, on a lot of communities. And that's one of the things I get a little skittish about with work. So that's the one thing I love about this program is that they thought the process through where you're weeding it out so that you are funding it. And it's just a, a cycle, but you're also going to be including a lot of money coming into the system because if you create this in, in an environment, I think you're going to encourage a lot of people to want to live in your community. And if you, it is just an interesting fact about early childhood education, and then I'll get off my soapbox on this. Alabama, and you think Alabama beats us in early childhood education. When you really start to look at why Toyota, BMW, all these major corporations are going down there. And if you look at Massachusetts, we're educating our youth, but they're moving out in droves. They're not living here, they're not staying here. Because we're, one, we don't offer an environment where it's affordable for them to do it. And two, we don't offer a way that most of these young millennials now are going to have to, and Eric is probably cringing behind me right now, but are going to have to work as a double-income family. And, and in order to do that, you have to have some sort of early-based childhood education plans. Otherwise, the, this group is, is looking at it from that perspective, saying, they have everything. If I go work for BMW down in Alabama or Toyota in Alabama, I'm going to have a great-paying job, it's affordable, and they invest in the, in children at an early age. And if you look around the world from a competitive standpoint, that's how we're, we don't compare to everybody else around the world. It's a, it's a big undertaking, but other countries have figured it out that you will, it will help you in the long run, getting these kids in early. And I'm, like I said, I am, I, something I've, it's a thought process that I've had ever since the day that I became a father. And I became a father late in life. Thirty-seven is late in life nowadays, becoming a father. And, you know, my daughter just said to me, her birthday Sunday, how about a sister or brother? Honey, it's too late for that. Too late. Unless they're seventeen, I'll adopt them from foster care or thirteen or something, I can do that. But, you know, it's, it's, it's one of those things that we take ser, I take seriously and I really, I look at it from a business standpoint, strict, strict business standpoint, it makes sense. And I'm big on return on investment and I think if we make the investment early with the right, in the right way and partner with the right people, we can make it happen. We can make it happen. Any other questions?
Aaron, go ahead.
This is going to be the last comment for the whole meeting. So I just wanted to say that we've lived through accepting the grant. We, we did the kindergarten grant in this district. I think right before I came onto the committee, but we lived through the, now you pay for it, you know, find, find a way.
Now you have full time.
And it didn't stop our district from, from participating because it clearly was the better option for the kids. So I appreciate everything you're saying.
Yeah, it's just, it's, it's one of those tough things that I, you know, when we, when I first came onboard as a selectman, the biggest thing that we had to discuss is going from half-day kindergarten to full-day kindergarten. And I came from full-day, I was in full-day. Oh, no, I was half-day, but in, in Worcester, where I grew up, it was full-day. And, and I said, why are we having this conversation? And why is anybody even fighting this? You know? Because you think about it. And again, it's the early portion of it that I say, you know, if you want to be competitive in this world, you have to start early and these kids have to.
I agree.
Have an opportunity. If we're not going to give them a chance. And, and sometimes grants are great and they do the right thing and they got the, you had the right commitment and the right tenacity to follow through with it. A lot of communities find it extremely, extremely tough to do it. And I think the grant process has to be in a way where it's, it's great and I hope when it comes to education, where education is so costly, that when we come up with these programs, it can't just be a one-and-done. It has to be a one, two, three, four-year process. And it might be a hundred, seventy-five, fifty, twenty-five, and then it gives you time to build a base and a foundation. But we can't just keep, you know, and I think that's what they're finding with the Skills Grants Program, that they can keep investing and then you're doing amazing things with it. And my challenge is for you, for me, for, for our district, is to help you get kids to stay in the district. School choice is here, it's not going to go away. The reality of it is, and anybody that's listening, school choice isn't going to go away. I know a lot of people hit me on Facebook on that all the time. Well, Representative, keep him, keep him in the district. Why are you making him go? Change the laws. Well, I can't because it's, it's been, you know, we can change the laws, but you're kind of going against the will of the people. The will of the people across the state have said, this is what we want. Last charter vote was different, so that kind of gave us a signal, okay, we need to slow back on charter schools. But you see charter schools, those applications that we're in are still there. But what I've been doing is meeting with Department of Education and we met with them. And, you know, it's amazing when you meet with them and you say, how do I get the students in my district not go to Franklin or Milford, that Milford's going to be doing a charter school, but let's use Franklin? How do I get my kids not in my district from Blackstone, Millville, not to go to Franklin? What do I need to do to stop that? And it's amazing, they'll say, well, if you look at this and you look at this and you do this and you start an innovation school. And I say, whoa, timeout, whoa, back up. What'd you just say? Innovations, what's an innovation school? You know? And those are things that I'm now interested in looking at. So how do I help you, how can I help you create? And, and you know the funny part, when you start asking the questions, it, the innovation schools can be in an existing building, it can be in existing classrooms, it can offer a certain amount of, of things. It would be more work for Dr. DeFalco because it'd have to report to two different boards, a board of directors and a school committee, but it keeps those dollars and keeps those kids in the district because you're focusing in on the exact same programs that these charter schools are offering, but you're putting it in your district. And it's amazing, Eric and I were shocked at how fast you can turn one of those programs into your school district as quickly. But it's going to take a lot of tenacity on the school board's side because there's union contracts that you have to deal with. And there has to be that, you know, wanting it in the district. And, but the skills grant programs, I think, are, are another great opportunity. I think what you and your colleagues are doing, Dr. DeFalco, to keep kids in the district and working together because you know you can't erect a new.
Right.
Building.
Yeah.
But the things that you're doing and the programs that you go into and making it work and working with each other, this group goes to this school, this group goes to this school, I think, one, is an unbelievable thing because I think the kids get to intertwine with different districts. But I also think it's, it's, it's creating an excitement for kids because it, it almost creates kind of a college environment. A little bit prepares them.
Yeah. We just launched Tuesday night at the Ed Hub.
That's awesome.
Eighteen kids from seven different communities in Blackstone Valley and I'm really proud to say five of the eighteen are from BMR. They're our freshmen. Mr. Dudik was there, myself, the other superintendents and principals from the other participating towns, the teacher that is running the course from Uxbridge, and our parents, the parents were there with the kids. It was just one, actually, I called Jane like giddy on the way home.
Yeah, it was great.
Like, you're not going to believe, this was so great because it was such an awesome experience and just the energy was awesome. And then the teacher, after about a half hour, threw all of us out and kept all the kids there and running their, their first class. It was really cutting-edge and very different.
I would be shocked if by next year you don't double that.
I agree. I agree.
Because everything that I'm seeing just out of Uxbridge, just from, you know, looking at the program, it's amazing what's happened. And a lot of, a lot of the kids are choosing not to go, not to discourage the BVT, it's in our school district, but a lot of kids are deciding to stay. I mean, that tells you a lot about what the program's doing and it's making, I think, education a whole different, giving education a whole different. And I said to the Lieutenant Governor, I said, I hope you're going to make it better. I hope you're going to make it stronger. I hope you're not going to pull funding.
Right.
And, and make it harder. Because I think I'm, we're starting to get our other districts involved now and I don't want us to fail. And we've been talking this program up because it's such great success. And it gives kids that are not going to go to college, a skill and an opportunity. And we, and that is a goal for all of us. At the end of the day, that's a goal for all of us, that we don't want somebody leaving here and not thinking that they don't have a future because they didn't go to college. They have a skill, they come out of, I, you know, somebody asked me what I thought about skills grant programs. I said, you know, the funny part about these skill grants programs are all the same programs that I had in high school that aren't there anymore.
Right. You're right.
There really are. I mean, they really are and I, you know, but, but they've made them better, stronger, more effective, and more emphasis on them because they're involving the private sector into a lot of these programs.
And, and they're, they, it's a creation of active education.
Right.
Education has become a passive thing where I, you know, and we're trying, you know, Mike is trying really hard to become active again and, and engage people and, and give opportunities and, and programs like this do that. It's hands-on, it's, I'm doing it, not just learning it, I'm doing it.
Right. And, and then the great thing about the, the collaboration with the businesses is they're teaching them, they, they're, one company I talked to said, the great thing is, I'm teaching them, these kids, the way I want to, if I bring them in and hire them.
Right.
They're not just learning it off of a basic system and then they have to come in here and figure out, we have to kind of retrofit them.
Right.
We're actually teaching them how it's really done and we're giving that equipment and we're partnering and working with that equipment. So I, I think, I applaud you, that's, that's fantastic. If you are going, going to submit the, a grant, please let us know because we jump right on those for you and get right on those for you. I think we're all set with, I know we had some talks about the water situation. I have the EPA coming to the district, Eric. The EPA coming to the district. We actually talked to the, the new town administrator about, he's coming to Millville. So I think we targeted the, the water situation there. We're trying to get some help from the EPA. So we are doing everything on our part. I hope that, I hope that you know that, just don't wait for me to, please don't wait for me to come to a school committee meeting or office hours. I tell everybody to call me, we jump right on it. If you wait until I come again to a school committee meeting to tell me something, the way bureaucracy works, it's another three months before we get it resolved. I like to start working on things right away. Each one of you, Dr. DeFalco, has my cell phone number, he has, just please reach out to me and reach out to Eric. We will jump right on it. And I look forward, just a quick E-triple-E update, if I could, because I know some people watching.
You can.
I'm learning a lot more about mosquitoes than I ever want. I should get a skills grant just because I learned so much about mosquitoes and viruses. They are spraying, they're continuing spraying, they're going to continue to spray, I think, through this week. Then they're going to evaluate next week if the, if more spraying has to be done. Obviously, Blackstone, Millville, Uxbridge are all in that, kind of not critical, but right below critical. I even forget the stage, Eric. What is it? What is it? Hi, sorry. Hi. And so we're there, Bellingham. Unfortunately, when you have cases, human cases, as close as you do to the area, it's going to happen. So I, I would encourage all your school, all the school kids, to please, the parents, protect your kids the best way you can with any of the repellents that you like to use, that you want to use. Make sure it's on them if you can. I know you've canceled, I think you're still in that canceling.
Yeah.
After school, after, after six o'clock. You know, I wouldn't, that still stands, we haven't gotten any updates from the DPH on that. I know it's frustrating, a lot of the football coaches and the nighttime sport coaches, but unfortunately, I, you know, people ask me, you know, why are you making such a big emphasis on this? Because I say, one person stricken with this in my district is too many. One person in the entire state. And if you look, the young girl in Sudbury, that is going to have a very tough life because of this disease, this, because of this virus. You know, our job is to prevent that the best way we can. I don't want to say this, I say this from, not from a standpoint that I want kids to go to school till the end of June, but a nice insulated winter would be grateful this year because it will insulate the ground, it will kill a lot of this nesting. And they're on it though for next year. And I know the legislature is going to make sure the funding is there to start even, you know, monitoring, spending money on monitoring and things that we need to, to do for the next wet spring season. And fortunately, we had a very wet spring and a very hot summer and you mix those two together and they start biting birds and birds start flying to other areas and all of a sudden it just spreads.
Go ahead.
I just want to say thank you for your very frequent updates. On Facebook is where I've seen yours, almost daily, so I really appreciate that. Do you know if they're spraying tonight or is the temperature too?
No, the temperature would be probably okay. I, we have to update, but I also think they came through Blackstone.
Not according to last night's map.
Not last night's map? What about the night before?
It was like, one of, last night or the night before, they came through Blackstone on Lake Iowa Thaside.
Lake Iowa Thaside, okay, yeah. So they're, they're doing five hundred and fifty-one square miles, I think, is what they told us.
Every night?
A total, like, total from, so basically Norfolk County through up through Walpole, I think.
It looked like last night, they were south of, they were Douglas State Forest, and then, and then they were, must have had another plane going. It looked like they hit Franklin and north of that, but maybe it was Bellingham area too.
I'm, I mean, right now, the weather coming into this weekend is still moderately warm. Last night was really humid. Last night would have been the night they, they, they came through, but I think if it was raining, it wasn't probably raining that bad, so they were probably able to do it. The whole purpose of air flight, when the warm weather comes, these mosquitoes flock up, they nest up, that's why bats love them. That's why bats love them, because they can get them and eat them. They flock up, they spray them, they kill them while they, you get the swarms that go up and then they come down when they obviously sweat and things like that. And then I found out horses sweat profusely and cows and things like that, where dogs don't necessarily sweat. Sweat and they're protected more, so it's all driven. That's why the human thing is so important not to be out in sports and things like that. Because, you know, you get football players and, you know, lacrosse players playing at night in a hot, humid night. Rugby players. I don't want to leave you guys out.
I had practice yesterday.
You don't want to be, you know, the sweat attracts them. And when you're playing football, you don't realize, you're not going to put repellent on and all this stuff. So fortunately, you know, they could, they're targets for this. And we're, like I said, we're learning a lot more about mosquitoes than I really want to know about. But it's a serious situation and that's why, you know, I apologize if people think that I'm overdoing the announcements. However, I'm the type of person that you can be really angry at me. If that's what you're going to be angry at me for, then be angry at me for that. Because if I have not one case in my district with that issue, a human issue, then I know I did my job. So, and I feel good about that.
I think it helps when surrounding towns are all on the same page. Because I know that my kids play football in North Smithfield and it took a while for them to get on the bandwagon. So, I mean, when you're butting other towns that are still doing outdoor things and you're indoors, you know. So I think once people start getting on the same page, I think it's much more beneficial. And like I said, you don't know that danger unless it happens to you and that's the worst-case scenario. So preventative is important.
And I just want to make sure that you understand from a monetary standpoint. I know some people are nervous about, oh, all the spraying, who's going to pay for it, budgets, all this. The governor's already made it very clear, legislature will, I'm sure, going to pass it. But the governor said, "We are going to make sure we reimburse the cities and towns that have overspent in their budgets for contracted mosquito, normal mosquito." So, you know, I know sometimes, you know, it gets a little bit, people think about those things. I just want to, you know, put people at ease. It's not going to affect your school budgets, it's not going to affect your municipal budgets. We have a supplemental coming up and it's going to be in the supplemental, so.
Anybody else?
Thank you for the time. I appreciate it.
We appreciate you taking the time.
All right. Thank you very much.
It's important to us and it's a good connection.
All right. And like I said, don't let, and anybody listening and anybody here, please do not wait. Just contact us immediately, immediately. And as I say to every school district, I would love any of your children, any of your schools, classes, anybody that wants, I know I'm going to be at, yes, I'm going to be at Ms. Conti's class tomorrow. That I'm always willing to do. But field trips, just please let us know if you're going to, if you want to come to the State House. We take a lot of pride in that. We just, yeah, we'll set up the tours and we do a lot of great things. But we have little extra special things that you don't get on the tours that we can do. So I would encourage it. I would be excited to have folks from BMR. I know Eric would be excited because this is his homeschool district. He has a lot of pride when that happens, as do I. And we're excited to have anybody. And it's always an open door for any of you. Anyone ever want to come? You can come see my little two-by-four, Dr. DeFalco sent me a two-by-four. I say it's a jail cell without the toilet or the bunk beds.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving forward, I'd like to ask Jill Pilagala-Ranay who joined us and take us through a conversation regarding special education. And we're going to look at it really through kind of where we have been, where we are and where we're going. And Ms. PG is going to go into some much, much-needed detail around programming and what we have to look forward to in terms of making sure that all truly means all. That we are reaching every student every day. Ms. PG?
Hello.
Hi, Jill.
So like Dr. DeFalco was saying, I'm going to be sharing the past, present and future of special education here at Blackstone Millville Regional. So we, a special education department, our school community, are dedicated to meeting the needs of all of our students. It is a purpose in our district blueprint to develop happy, healthy and proficient students who are prepared for college, career and community. So what I'll focus on tonight is where we've been, where we are and where we're going. I might forget. If I forget to push us forward, let me know. Just adding an extra step to my presentation tonight, so. So where we've been last year, and I think I've described it as more of a year of exploration and discovery here in the district. I've been here for a lot of years, but, you know, my, my experience has been limited to some of the buildings. So I really got a chance to take a look at the district as a whole last year. So if you look in our first box, when it says the program model, we did start the year with, last year, with 224 students from across the district. And our model that was in place, we did have an interim director of special education. And our chair people were building-based. So we did have our BMR team chair, who was also a teacher, and she took care of our eight through 12-plus. Our middle school team chair was also a teacher, did our six through eight. We had an AFM JFK team chair.
Sorry, I don't have a copy. I was just trying to.
Our AFM JFK team chair was K through five.
It's in the warrants.
Yeah.
It's in the warrants.
Sorry.
Sorry. Sorry.
No, that's okay. Do you need different calls?
Right there. It's in the warrants folder.
It's in the warrant folder.
We're good. Sorry. It's okay. Just want to make sure you have the warrants that you need.
It's Tammy's fault. She threw the warrants at me.
In MES, we had a point seventeen chair that did our PK through five. Again, like I said, these were building-based. And what I found was, we had a lot of different ideas and models and understanding of our special ed process and procedures across different buildings. And if you look at the bottom, it says Millville, the AFM JFK, middle school and BMR. I just gave you the staffing that was in place for last year with our teachers and paraprofessionals. And underneath were more of our support staff, our OT, our PT, our BCBA. I made a note there that said, "Teacher-created schedules." So it's very different how we do scheduling here for special ed in all the buildings. At the high school and the middle school, you know, the team chairs working with our principals, they're getting schedules together as part of the master schedules because they're classes. The elementary school, it's a little bit different. The schedule is built. And then our special education teachers, when school starts, need to build their schedules based on what the students need. So it is done a little bit differently. It's teacher-created schedules once the year starts. I'll get into a little bit more of that when I say where we are and where we're headed. The next section is curriculum and instruction. So what I discovered last year, that we really do have a varied, a lot of different instructional methodologies, content and strategies, which at first, it can be a good thing. However, we really need to look at, are they truly anchored in well-established, in a well-established foundation? An understanding of truly what students need. I found that although we have a lot in place, they lack focus. Lack focus in the kind of instructional materials we're using, as well as the practices and methodologies. Our staff also had inconsistent access to regular education programs. And some students, some teachers who did actually have it, they just weren't using some of the programs that were out there. We had a lack of consistent implementation of programs across and within grade levels, buildings and district as a whole. So we would have some students who may be starting a program in second grade and they're starting a brand-new program in third grade and might be doing a little bit of something different in fourth grade. So it's almost starting from scratch every time, but we need kids to continue to move forward.
Can you give an example of like those programs that you're talking about, per se?
So if you look at the bottom here, I have some of them in there. So we've used things like EdMark. So this is in addition to, this is special ed programs. EdMark, reading A through Z foundations, Read Live, teacher-made materials, computer-generated worksheets. But we did also look at Ascend Math last year. So what was happening is I think that teachers were just picking and choosing, and again, I think all with good intention. How do I meet the needs of my students? But there was so much out there, it wasn't focused. We weren't saying, "These are our main go-tos." Not to say that you're not going to have that population of students who might need a little bit more, but these are our go-tos. But what was happening, there weren't any go-tos. It was kind of left to staff to say, "I'll try this and I'll try this." So what was happening is, if we know a student needed some reading intervention, one teacher may choose one program. The next year's teacher may choose another program, the following, so again, that's different language, it's different philosophies, it's different instructional strategies. So it's almost, they're constantly starting fresh. Not to say having options isn't good, but there's a point where you have to focus. Also, our data collection strategies and techniques were varied and they were inconsistent. And we really did have a limited use of data to drive instruction. However, moving forward, there's even more data now. So we're going to be able to use that to drive instruction. Our continuum of services in the district, we do offer full inclusion, partial inclusion, substantially separate. Last year, our out-of-district population was at twenty-four and went on a forty-five-day assessment. And if you look under there, what I did is I noted the more specialized programs we have across the district and in each building. In Millville, we do have an integrated preschool. We had five sections last year and we also have a sub-separate PK there, one section of that. At the complex, we had an upper essentials classroom, a lower essentials classroom and a pragmatic learning classroom. Last year, at the middle school, we didn't have any specialized programs. And at BMR, we have three. We have our Community Connections Program, which is our eighteen-to-twenty-two-year-old program. We have an essentials classroom and we also have an alternative learning classroom. What I want to focus on too is just like, why does she have that little picture up at the top? So I just want to say that we have the seeds for success. We have our teachers. We have our paraprofessionals. We have our processes and procedures, our assessment, our practices, our programs. We have our students and families ready to go and we have a strong admin team. So they, those seeds are there. So where we are, this year is we're building our foundation for change. And I know this, to be very clear, I am very cognizant of the fact that change can be very difficult for everyone. But we're, it's going to happen if we're moving forward. So again, if you look on the left-hand side, our program model, we did present last year, they were looking to change our special ed model. So our intent this year was to start off with a Director of Learner Support and Assistant Administrator for Special Education. However, our plan didn't go as we had hoped. We did have candidates, we did interview, but we couldn't find that fit for our district. So we kind of looked at, what's our next step for Plan B to kind of get the support that we need? So we are moving forward with our Director of Learner Support Services and a Planning, Teaching and Learning Coach. And actually, Dr. DeFalco, you have a packet on your desk, probably Monday morning.
Perfect.
To bring someone in. So we will have our Planning, Teaching and Learning Coach. We will have our team chair model changed. And you'll notice there's an error on there. It does say, "We have a team chair person seven through twelve." That should be corrected, it's eight through twelve. And then we have a team chair person four through seven and a team chair person pre-K through three. And we're hoping this is going to unify what we're doing. It'll, we'll have more consistent communication, consistent expectations. And what we're also doing this year is we're partnering our team chairs up with a school psychologist. So we will have our same model here, but they're going to have a school psychologist that works with them. So that means kindergarten in Millville, kindergarten in Blackstone. We're looking at the same processes, procedures, models, expectations, and same thing for all the way through, to bring us together. If you look at the bottom, this is what this year's staffing looks like. Same with our supplemental services. And this year, what was a little bit different, again, the middle school and high school principals were involved, as well as the team chairs. And this year, I had the opportunity to sit down with both elementary principals. We looked at all of class lists. We looked where students were, what student needs to help develop, put those schedules together. So when school started, I had the opportunity to sit down with each special education teacher at the elementary schools to review. So we're all on the same page and our kids are ready to go. Curriculum and instruction. We do have our Planning, Teaching and Learning Coach, hopefully, within the next few days. And we're hoping that this person, just like with our two coaches now, be able to support our inclusion model, support our pull-out models and programs. Ensure that we have high standards, no matter what, where our kids are, in or out of the classroom. We want to focus on the quality of instruction and our instructional methodologies. The other thing is, we have to develop focused instructional methodologies, content and strategies. Right now, our work with focused schools, we are going to be developing, as a district, two to four best instructional practices designed to address our instructional focus, which is problem-solving. And again, in special ed, we may look at, what are those few focused interventions? Again, it's great to have all of these things to go to, but we really need to focus our time and energy. We need to have consistent access to regular education programs and we are. Our principals have been fantastic to make sure our current staff and our new staff is getting absolutely everything that they need. We need consistent implementation of programs across and within grade levels and buildings. So what we're identifying is, out of those programs, what is our go-to reading program? What is our go-to math program? So although, for example, in the elementary school, we may be using Envisions, we may have students who need a little bit more. We did trial Ascend Math, we got a lot of positive feedback from it last year, so we are looking at Ascend Math this year. Teachers liked it because it could really focus on an area. After you went through either the STAR assessment or the OWN assessment that we do for Ascend, teachers can assign specific lessons or follow-ups for kids to be able to do that. So again, we're using the same language, same procedures, so there's some carryover year to year.
I have a question.
Yep.
Trying to process really quickly right now. So last year, you said, in terms of the planning and the planning, like teacher schedules and things, that, I could be just processing this wrong. But last year, you know, you had the special educator coming in, trying to fill the spots in the teacher-created schedules, correct? So has that changed this year? Is that what I'm seeing, that they have been plugged, you know, I don't want to say plugged in. But there's, it was centered around the student or the needs of the specific special education students?
Right. So what was different this year with our two elementary principals? We were able to sit down and go through lists of students, the classes they were in prior to school starting.
Right.
The list of students, the classes they were in, the teacher classes, and then developed the schedules prior to school starting.
Okay. So it wasn't plugged in, like, "I can fit you here, here and here," and it meshes?
The students' need.
Okay.
Right. And then we went from there.
Okay.
And not to say, so there's always tweaking that.
Right, right. I just wanted to really understand the difference between what it looked like and what has changed. Thank you.
I noticed a big shift of special educators at the elementary level. Was there a shift of students as well?
Yeah, we're going to get there.
Oh, okay.
And again, use of data to drive instruction.
Is the data points, stars and, or you have other, obviously, the ones that are listed, but some of them are, you know?
Some of our data, I mean, when I talk about data, it's any data we collect. It could be formal, it could be informal. So it could be our STAR. It could be data we collect on our work samples on a regular basis. It could be our F and P. It could be some of the data we get when we use Ascend Math or when you use Read Live, it gives you. So actual data. Not that I think and I feel, it's, this is what the student needs, is showing. So we have, with your support, we have ten teachers in the district who are participating in Wilson, three of our reading specialists and the rest are our special education teachers. And they are across the district at every level. We are going to have Wilson-certified and trained people.
Question.
Yep. No, go right ahead.
This might be too early, but with the ten specialists being trained in Wilson, will there be some type of plan moving for the summertime for them to carry over the Wilson, Wilson support for students?
You mean like an ESY?
Yeah.
So if any student is identified with ESY?
They get, they get it, I understand that. But with these teachers that were spending the money training, I think that's my question.
So I guess it would depend if they apply.
Okay.
Do you know what I mean?
I just wasn't sure if we had to have something that we could offer those students. They may not, they may not meet ESY, but they may be low enough and we're training these ten, ten teachers that, you know, it could be a.
Well, sometimes we're tutoring.
Yeah, for those, for those that may not meet the ESY, but will.
Right. So just to forecast, Ms. Schaefer and I and her school-based team, we had a, through Ms. Schaefer, we had a lengthy discussion last spring about applying for a Twenty-First Century Grant. And hooked up Ms. Schaefer and her team with some outside support to develop that grant, of which we are going to be putting together for this year. And we are looking to, and there are different levels of that, but I believe we're looking at either the forty-student or the sixty-student program. And that work will start over the summer.
Right.
So that we can actually run some programming starting in the summer.
I just feel like we did spend a lot of money for that training.
Yep.
And I know that even low, low students on the reading, you know, they would benefit from that. And so if we're going to invest ten teachers being trained in Wilson, that's really well, that's really good. So, you know, I would just be curious on what a summer.
Our summer offerings need to change, like drastically, from just ESY to actually a very robust program. So we're looking at to start that with a Twenty-First Century.
Or just something to use, you know, to utilize that training.
Absolutely. Yep.
So the next one says progress, program, program access and implementation and focused professional development. So if you look at Envision. So if you look at Envisions, the big idea is empowering writers. We use novels and anthologies. We just want to make sure we have focused PD, so our teachers know how to use, you know, the programs that are in place, not just our regular teachers, but our special ed teachers as well. Again, I mentioned that Ascend Math is something that we're incorporating this year. Foundations is something that we already incorporate as a district. Our Wilson reading will be up and running, and what's great is, all of our teachers who are currently being trained did participate in a three-day overview. And with participation in a three-day overview, Wilson will tell you, yes, you know, you can move forward and, and start implementing the program. So some of our teachers are, it'll be great practice for them as well. I know they work individually with students, but they have the foundation to begin to implement. And Read Live, Read Naturally. Again, it does have both components, both the fluency, it has a little comprehension, it does have some decoding. We also still are using some programs like EdMark, Touch Math, and Reading H2Z, because we do have some students who are more intense, and that's okay. But we have to designate, this is the next step of it. It's not just whatever you think is going to work, or pull the worksheet off online. They need to be focused, and they need to be taught with fidelity. And this year, I would love to investigate writing and trial some writing programs.
Beyond, uh, special education writing programs or beyond empowering writers?
Beyond empowering writers for, like, a support for special ed, like we did with Ascend Math. It was, it was just.
Okay. I have one, I'm not going to say one question, because I keep asking questions, but are the special educators involved in the PLC with the writing? Are they involved in the PLC meetings each week?
Yes.
Okay.
And what will be nice now is during our, it's our PLCs, we will have a special education coach to be able to join them as well. Our continuum of services, the top stays the same, but what you'll notice is our out-of-district last year was 24, and this year we have 22. So we brought two students back because of the specialized programs that we, we developed, and we expanded here in district. And that slash one is we still have a 45-day assessment student. If you look, and this might answer some of the questions, if you look at the schools, we have Millville, again, AFM, but Millville still has our integrated preschool and our sub-separate PK. Our pragmatic learning classroom has moved to Millville, and we have the new alternative learning program that is in Millville as well. At the AFM JFK now, is housed our Essentials program. The other Essentials program moved to the middle school, because as students age, the programs are, are going with them. And at BMR, we still have our community connections, our essential, and our alternative learning program. And what was really good, when we, over the summer, we did have some of our teachers who were actually teaching some of these, these programs, did some of their ESY there. And Christina, it was very helpful, what we did is, we talked about what would be the impact if the, if both of these classrooms were here. We looked at the hallway, we went through classrooms, we talked about staffing, so all of those skills, all of those things were discussed before they come over here, over to Millville. And what we found is, not only do we have these, having specific programs here in Millville, they're able to share staff, share resources. Our BCBA, where a lot of our specialized programs are in Millville, is able to spend, do you know what I mean, the time that she needs there. Not that she doesn't go to the other buildings, but the programs are focused. And it's really nice for those programs to have some of that staff to, for, for support. At the bottom, it's a little bit different. So see, these are some of the changes that have occurred this year. In Millville, we have a K, we're, we're focusing on focus, our special ed teachers focusing in specific areas. In Millville, we have two special education teachers. One of them is a K5 math-focused special education teacher, and one of them is a K5 literacy-focused special education teacher. And again, what was really nice is we had a chance to sit down, both with Christina and the special ed teacher who was there at the time, and we kind of looked at all of that. So we're trying to get our teachers, and I bring this up later, not only are they going to be masters of the methodology, but they have to also be masters of content. So this is a great way to start that. So we'll be able to get some feedback and see how that's going, but our teachers are going to be able to really focus on that content with the students. At the middle school, we are investigating, they started a little bit with a model of trying to find people who are more focused for content special education teachers. That's something that we've started a little bit. It's something we need to explore more. At BMR, we already have, because it's a requirement, content-focused, highly qualified special education teachers in, you know, the English, the math, the sciences. At JFK, we started a mini-model. Our K1, we're going to have a K, two teachers, K1. And again, one of them is going to focus on the K1 math, and one of them is going to focus on the K1 literacy. And the thing I want to stress here is our inclusion. It needs to be purposeful placements and support with specialized instruction. Right now in the district, we do have inclusion, supported inclusion with teachers, with paraprofessionals. And we've also looked at the elementary schools having flexibility for our teachers during the RTI to be able to take a look at all of our students, to see how they're doing and see what other interventions that they need. At the high school and the middle school, the students get some academic support now, so they're able to monitor through there.
Jill.
Yep.
On the BMR, the content-focused teachers.
Yes.
Are, are, is the model such that a particular student who may have an ELA-based goal and a math goal, they're working with two different special educators to, to provide the, whatever instruction is required?
So.
And then someone case manages, or whatever we call it here?
Absolutely. So what we try to do at the high school is, we may have, I may have, one of my teachers is highly qualified in math, and one is in ELA. When those students, and they might get some academic support, and they, or may have some inclusion support. What we do at the high school is, during their academic support, they have it with the liaison, who that liaison would be, and the paraprofessional who supports the students during inclusion. So they're able to really have that, you know, communication, they're able to collaborate. But yeah, so even though two, and, you know, we, we have a ver, they're a very collaborative staff at the high school. They're always sharing their, you know, what's going on with students. So yes, you could have a student who has two different teachers, but there is collaboration, there's ongoing data collection and shared between them.
Thank you. Here. What does it look like on the AFM side at the complex right now?
So at the AFM side, so we have an inclusion model. Right now, we have one teacher and one paraprofessional per grade level, except for the K1s. They're going to be shared. So we have inclusion, and we have pull-out. So sometimes, depending on what the students' IEPs came up on, we have sometimes when teachers are in there, the full-time, sometimes pairs are in there full-time, sometimes teachers are in there half-time. It all depends on what the student IEP calls for.
So, separate from the Essentials program is what you're saying?
Yes. Essentials program is, is a separate program. Right now, it's servicing our few fourth and fifth graders. It is different program. That is separate.
And then just to back up a little bit, when you were going through the program model?
Mm-hmm.
And what, where we've been and where we are, you mentioned having one school psychologist per team chair.
Correct.
How many school psychologists do we have?
Three.
So we are currently at three?
We were at three, and we still are.
Okay.
It's just that last time, they were split up in kind of an awkward way. It wasn't even, we had someone who was at the complex and a little time in Millville, and someone spent some times at Blackstone, a little bit, they were kind of all over the place.
There, there was no count for the psychologists on here, but they do fall under.
That's my fault, I should have added that. There's three, and that has not changed.
Thank you.
So, as I mentioned before with our picture, we have the seeds. Now we're building our foundation, and it's like having nutrient-rich soil for growth. All right, where are we going, developing our future? So our program model, we always need to have consistent review of programs and models. So you'll notice that faded out a little bit is assistant administrator of special education and a planning and teaching and learning coach. We need to revisit it. We need to see, is it working? Is it not working? And what do we need moving forward? So I will be able to share some of that, hopefully, once we get our teaching and learning coach and, and see how that goes. Again, you'll notice, I did mention that there was an error with the team chair. Our plan is to see how this model goes this year with our eight-through-12, our four-through-seven, and our PK-through-three with their partner school psychologists. And again, we're hoping, we've, I've already talked to all the principals, we're hoping to have more discussions through the summer that I will have with them and for teacher involvement. So we're going to make sure that, again, that when we schedule students, it's planned, it's collaborative, it's purposeful, and it's ready to go. Our curriculum and instruction, again, we always are going to look at consistent review of curriculum and instruction. We need consistent feedback, supervision, and support. I feel that our teachers are working really hard, and I think that, you know, we need to also make sure that we're giving them the kind of feedback to recognize things are working, and also to say, what do we need to do to change some of the things that may not be working? Again, we're going to focus on, and expanding instructional methodologies, content, and strategies. We need consistent access to regular education programs, which, again, is happening this year. Consistent implementation of programs across, that's something we need to keep, be very watchful of this year. Our teachers' teachings to fidelity. Consistent use of data to drive instruction, both formal and informal. And also, when we're developing IEPs at those team meetings, we need to have data on the table. It's not what I think, what I feel. Consistent program access and implementation of visions, big ideas, empowering writers, novel and anthologies, just to say a few, continuing on with the programs that I mentioned before, and hopefully, where it says writing program in italics, hopefully, we'll have identified something to use. And again, those supplemental programs for more substantial students who need additional support. Our continuing of services is similar, but what we're looking at is an expansion of, an expansion, if you, if you go down, all the things are the same at the top. We want to expand. We need to take a close look at our Essentials program, because we do have some students who may be moving up, and we need to look at age, age span, is that going to work? Are our students still similar, or do we need to split that classroom? At BMR, we're still looking at, you know, the same there. But at the bottom, we want to expand our content-focused special education teacher model. So next year, our hope is, again, we're going to collect data to see how it goes with our K1 and our model in Millville, to look to expand our, maybe a 2, 3, and a 4, 5, so those grades could be connected. So we could have, again, two teachers in grades two, I mean, one and two, and one and three, but they may be working together as more content-focused specialists. At the middle school, again, we're going to continue to look at how best, what models can work best, because again, we want our kids to be able to, you know, have the consistency for the content. And inclusion, again, it needs to be purposeful placement with support and specialized instruction. And that's the thing we're going to be talking more at our teams about, you know, what exactly is inclusion, so everyone's on the same page? It's not someone who sits in class taking notes for students. It's not someone who's just pointing. It's actually instruction that's going on. And as we move forward, we are committed in special education for the development improvement of all of our practice and our programs for kids. And I really do believe with our focus, with the commitment, with the energy, and with my flower, a little bit of sunshine. I do believe we'll achieve, and I guess you could say we'll bloom. So we have staff that work very hard, and it's not all about working harder sometimes. We need to work smarter. I remember being as a team chairperson, and we would sit around the table at the high school, and the kids would come to the meeting. And a lot of the time, sometimes the students were accused of, well, you didn't study enough, or you didn't study hard enough. And I will never forget sitting at a meeting, and we had a student, it was just an initial evaluation, and it came and it showed us, this student had some challenges visually, visual processing, visual spatial. And we'd say, well, how are you studying? Well, I look at my notes every night. I look at my book every night. And he was spending time doing that. But just to tweak that, to say, you know what? Your listening comprehension is strong. You can, you, everything you hear, you absorb. Just tweaking what we're doing is what we need to do. That student didn't need to work harder, he needed to work smarter. He needed to find what was going to work for him. So in our district, we need to focus on what's going to work for us. So as we move forward, we need to focus and work smarter. And we're going to have a continued focus on building a district of one. As I told you before, I think it was last year, I really found that all of our schools, if you went in, you would never know, we all belong to the Blackstone Millville Regional School District. And I think we are, not just one step, several steps closer to, to becoming that district of one. So some of the things I have on here, again, we have benchmarks, we have timelines, we have goals, but I want everyone to remember, this is always ongoing, and it's a never-ending process. We always have to look at what's going on and reevaluate. We need to focus on consistency. We need to focus on providing constructive feedback. Again, supervision. I think our teachers, again, have been trying to do the best they can, but they haven't really been given a lot of direction and support. We need to use data to drive instruction, and like I said, formal and both, informal. We need collaboration amongst regular ed and special ed, and special ed also to be able to collaborate, not only in their own grade level, but amongst grade levels. Same thing with our team chairs and school psychologists, to have that ongoing collaboration and regular collaboration. Our professional development needs to be focused, and our special ed teachers need to be part of that professional development and not be doing something separate all the time. We need those focused instructional practices. Again, I mentioned develop the IEPs that are data-driven. We need to make sure that all of our team chairs and our special education teachers have that knowledge about the special education process and eligibility. And as I said, our special education teachers, I understand, I went to school to be a special ed teacher, and we're masters of methodology, how do we do things? But what we need to focus on is also the content. And just to focus on, again, how all kids can learn. So finally, our final goal is, again, a district of one, 2,000 strong.
Blooming, blooming.
Yes, really blooming.
Any other questions for Jill?
Jane. Excuse my voice, Jill.
That's fine.
Each slide has some inclusion piece to it. There's, there's certainly a difference between including and, and having a true co-teaching model. Is, is any of this reference to inclusion going towards a co-teaching model at any level? Do we, do we think we have the capability of getting there?
I think we have the capability of doing anything. What we need to do is take a look at our staffing and make sure, because again, you know with co-teaching, it is more staffing, if you want teachers in there doing co-teaching. However, what we're really trying to work on is making sure that our teachers have an opportunity at some point, say in the elementary, during the ELA, to be part of that ELA co-teaching along with that teacher. Same thing at the high school. When we do have a teacher who's included, we, we try to make sure that they're specialized and there's co-teaching. We actually had an absolutely beautiful co-teaching model at the high school with one of our, our two English teachers. It was a true co-teaching model. Would I like to work toward that? Yes. Because when teachers are in the classroom, they should be teachers and not paraprofessionals.
Indeed.
Do we have any co-teaching right now?
We do. We do have some teachers in the classroom. Would I say it's a true right now co-teaching model? No, we need work.
The, the teachers are, are probably the teachers that are also doing the specialized instruction?
Yes. So we have, say we have a, a, a fourth-grade teacher, and we have some students who require pull-out, she'd be doing that pull-out, and she would also help support students within the classroom. students within the classroom. But again, do I think it's a full, integrated co-teaching model right now? No, I don't. I would describe it more as a supportive, you know, that our teacher going in as the master of methodology, and not as much as content.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Thanks, Jill.
Thank you so much.
I'm going to leave that there. I don't want to touch the clicker.
Thank you.
Somebody else, somebody else click it.
One quick question, more, how do you put it, Be 504 training that?
Yes.
Was that held on Tuesday?
Actually, we had to reschedule, so it's on the, is it this week or next week? 24th, so two weeks.
And it will be everybody?
Yes.
Good to hear. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
So I know, you know, we spent a little bit of time on reviewing that, but I think it's important to just show that there is a, there is a trajectory that we're. One of the things that I appreciate about the way that Jill kind of laid out this piece about where we're going, is there is a very kind of heavy emphasis on the reflective piece about what's working in terms of some of the things that we're trying this year. One of the pieces that is not included in here, and it wouldn't be, and the committee will hear a bit more about this as we move forward through the year, is that we will have a new core literacy program that will really anchor all of the work we're doing K-12 in reading and writing. And so I just wanted to put that piece out there as we're starting to organize our committee structure and getting teachers on board to help us really go through that, kind of reviewing research and piloting and selection process for that. But that will be a really important piece. And, you know, we talked about before, kind of the idea of this core work is like the hub, and these other kind of, you know, these innovations, these other components are like the spokes kind of to the wheel. And so we'll be looking at kind of swapping out that hub, if you will, regarding our work with literacy during this school year for implementation of next year. And so there is a, there is clearly, thanks, Jesse, there's clearly going to be a direct impact on, you know, how we work with our students with special needs specifically around reading and writing. And so as we go through the trials, as Jill mentioned, around the curriculum and instruction pillar of this work, know that we'll have kind of a different hub in there as we move forward with that. And so this certainly will not be the last update to the committee on this work. I know this is a major, important piece of our work. We've talked a lot about equity issues in our district, and we've said repeatedly that this is our group of kids that we need to really be focusing, you know, in terms of really lifting these kiddos to where they need, where they need to be academically. And so we will be hearing more from Jill as the year goes on and meeting our instructional coach for special ed when that individual comes on board. So, all right. So thank you for that. Shifting gears, we're going to just talk briefly this evening. Donna, would you mind just joining us at the table? And Mr. Dudik, would you mind, Mike, come on down, too? I'm going to go through a little bit about this process and idea behind Portrait of a Graduate for Blackstone Millville, and kind of where this lives, and what this means, and why we're taking this on, and how this is going to really help kind of complement, if you will, our blueprint for district improvement. But Donna and Mike are really the experts on this and are here to answer any questions that you might have as we work through this. And just a quick kind of commercial on this piece. I know the committee has met Donna a couple times, and specifically in relation to work around personalized learning. And while we see that, that's, you know, will, my sense is, will ultimately probably be a part of this. Donna has also done some really strong work in helping school communities get organized around, so what does all of this work actually mean for the student who gets their diploma in June in front of the high school and moves forward into college career or, you know, community, and how they're able to contribute successfully with that? So I know Donna wears many hats, but I just wanted to kind of shift gears and explain that piece of it. And I also want to give Donna and her organization kind of a big shout-out, because they've worked really hard to make sure that we can do this. As you can imagine, with any process, there certainly is a, you know, a price tag that goes along with that. And Donna and her team at base camp have worked super hard to make sure that, that we can do this work at a very minimal, minimal cost to the actual district. And that's just because this is how passionate Donna and her team is about this, and we're really grateful for that and excited for the opportunity. And so with that, and just, you know, by all means, jump in and ask questions as we move. I won't say and read this to you, but essentially, the gist of this work is we need to clearly define, when we say that our students will be happy, healthy, proficient, ready for college, career, and community, that's a lot of words, but what does that mean? And we have to put some meat to that. And so this process will help us kind of walk through and define that. And, you know, Mike and I had a really great conversation about, you know, the timeliness of this. And so I think in some places, they've done this work. It's happened, it's in place, and they're, you know, they're kind of moving forward. And I feel as though that this is coming at just the right time for our district. Because as we finalize the roadmaps for the blueprint for district improvement, you all saw the blueprint in the spring. It's done as far as the actual strategy, the objectives, initiatives, the committee has seen those. You know, you're probably tired of hearing about the fidget spinner. It's going to come up.
It's grown.
It is, it's going to come in a different shape later. But, but the idea is that, you know, all of this is going to lead to what? And we're going to define that. We're going to define what we mean by that through this process. And so moving forward, this kind of concept of that the why is more important than the what. And you can see our two students, student A, student B, and you can see the, really the different experience that they're having. And I have to tell you, sitting at the ed hub on Tuesday evening with our students that are participating in that advanced manufacturing course, they look like student B. And one of the things a teacher said that just really resonated with me was around, and I'm going to actually kind of quote him, he said, in front of the parents, in front of the superintendents, in front of the principals, talk about pressure, by the way, right? And the high school teacher from Uxbridge says to the students, you know, there's certain things I have to teach you, there are competencies you need to know, but we're going to kind of throw all that out the window. He's like, I have this bucket of stuff that you need to figure out and learn, but you're all going to tell me what you want to do more of and less of. And I thought, that is, you talk about student ownership, right? We've got the set of competencies, you've got the standards, the things that the kids have to take on, but when you look at this student B, and you talk about communication, collaboration, 21st century skills, and empowering the learner, that's what this teacher was able to do. And I know, you know, Mike was there with me, and the energy was just unbelievable for late Tuesday, you know, afternoon. And again, we have five students of the 18 from Blackstone Millville, which is really awesome. And so that's the kind of experience that we want to get to, in terms of really defining what this ultimate graduate looks like. And the why is because when we are really driving the work in the classroom and supporting our teachers and building professional learning, it all anchors back to this. This is the reason that we're doing A, B, and C, whether it's professional learning or giving feedback, et cetera. So, and then just again, another visual, you know, this is a great, it's not certainly a new cartoon, but it's a great one in terms of, you know, we, for some reason, we tend to value a very particular, and I'm just saying the general we in education, a very particular type of student. And I will talk to you as a dad for a minute. I have one child who will do that work because he's a pleaser, and he doesn't want to let anybody down. I have another child, my oldest, but it's all right, who intentionally.
We're not identifying.
He will, it's all right, it's my own, who, he will not do that. He will absolutely not do that. He will not fall into line. He's going to do it his way. And, you know, unfortunately, we build a system that really values that one type of learner. Well, what we are trying to do, I think the committee knows clearly in the community at this point, we're trying really hard to do this different, because every single student matters. And there's more than, you know, one way to get the work done. And just a really quick anecdote, yesterday I spent a full day in kindergarten, and it was definitely the best day in the past 14, 15 months that I've been here, I think. I had a really awesome experience with the kids and with the teachers. And we gave a math pre-test. This is like the perfect example of this cartoon. And the teacher was awesome. She was very brave to kind of take this on, and, you know, she and I were kind of processing before, and she's like, what do you think? What is the best way to do this? Do you have any ideas? And, you know, we decided to just, like, just run it. Do it whole class, read the instructions, and let the kids, you know, kind of puzzle through it. And it was, it was the best example of this. It was hilarious, because the students, right, so there was, it was an introduction to algebra in kindergarten. It was eight plus blank equals 10, right? That's algebra, right? Find the missing variable. And these kids are five. Brilliant, brilliant minds in our kindergarten. So the directions were really anchored around, like, count the dots. How many boxes have how many dots? The kids had no idea what the directions were saying, but they could tell you that number was two, because they know to get from eight to 10, you have to add two more. They got it, right? And some kids were able to count, and some kids were using their fingers, and some kids were drawing, some, they couldn't actually write a two, but they said two, but they wrote an eight, but they knew it was a two, right? These are our youngest learners. So, you know, I really appreciated the teacher taking that on, because it's a great example of let the kids wrestle with their learning and get to the answer the way they need to, and show us that. And some kids actually didn't write anything, they just told us. And so we just kind of wrote it down, or kind of wrote it on their paper next to what they were telling us. And they get it, and they're smart, and they're, you know, the kids understand what they're, you know, what they need to do. We have to help them, kind of show them that and allow them to get there how they need to. And so part of this process will help us really define that very specifically. And again, I'm not going to sit here and read, you know, each month to you and explain this process in great detail, but you can see that there is a very clear plan on how we want to roll this work out. And it is a, you know, referred to as a community team plan, because as we'll see at the end of our brief discussion, it is a community team that's going to lead this work. But I want to highlight just a couple things, I think, that are really important here. And that second bullet is this idea of kind of a needs assessment, right? So we, ultimately, we'll figure out where it is we want to go, but we have to know where we're starting from. And, you know, the committee's, you know, no stranger to that. We've read a lot of information, and we've talked a lot about where we are, and we're going to, we're going to kind of revisit those documents and revisit those conversations with this team. But we actually want to take it a step further, and we're going to visit some classrooms. We're going to get a really good sense with this community team of what's happening in that classroom? What does the teaching and learning look like? And, you know, when we think about, how do we get to student B over here? You know, how far away from that are we? And what's the level of consistency with that, and the change that needs to be brought forward, and the support to help us get there? And so, again, I won't read the whole timeline to you. One of the pieces I just want to highlight in November is this, just this idea of reviewing research, right? We're not the first district to go through this. There's a lot of information out there that we will, we will be able to bring forward to the community team to help us kind of delve into those different 21st century skills, what things we prioritize specifically around our purpose of happy, healthy, proficient, college, career, and community-ready, and really help kind of spell out what those 21st century skills will be, and then kind of backing that up. Again, the work continues through January. I think one of the things, again, that's hugely important, is this idea of learning tours. We need to get out of BMR. We need to see what's going on in other places. There are incredible things happening here, which, you know, I really want to underscore, but there's cool things happening in other places, too. And there are other high schools, and middle schools, and elementary schools, and district teams that are wrestling with the same stuff that we are. And so yes, context matters, but it's also good to get out and see some best practices. And Erin, it has not been lost on me, your question from last late fall about personalized learning and summit and looking at school data that have been using it for a few years, and know that we'll have that information available to the committee to see. This is not, for the record, I want to be very clear about this, at the end of this process, we're not looking to buy, adopt, become part of necessarily anything. It's helping us define what we want our kids to be able to do at the end of their experience with us. Again, the timeline for February and March, and this is really, as kind of laid out here, this idea of moving portrait to practice and really helping us to start kind of define, you know, what are the shifts that we need to make in order to put this in place? And so, you know, I know the committee very much subscribes to the same notion, but when we think about the role of the committee, and we think about, you know, policy, and we think about budget, making sure that we have all of those pieces in place to support the work, right? We always say that the fiscal plan needs to match the instructional plan. And so that is very much ringing true with this piece of the work as well. And I just want to highlight, we did try to switch up the fidget spinner a little bit, but the idea is that, right, when you have your what, your how, the whole child, the community, that equals the graduate, right? When all of these pieces come together, we should be able to have students move forward from our district. And I know Eric, who was here earlier, one of our graduates, you know, is young and experienced in age, but someday, hopefully, he will be the representative, or he will be the senator, or the governor, fill in the blank, right? We want to make sure that our kids are ready for all of those opportunities. We will have our community team out in the community, talking to the public. We will have them in front of the committee, talking about, here's what we learned, here's what we heard, here's what we saw, here's what we think, you know, we need to do and what we can do. And so we'll be having those presentations. This will be a very public conversation. And then, of course, at the end of the year, a celebration and plans for moving forward. And so I want to be really kind of clear about this. This process is not something different. It's not, you know, I don't want the community or anyone to feel like, here's one more, you know, kind of crazy thing this superintendent's dragging us through. This fits right into our blueprint. And this really helps us to define clearly the type of student that we want to produce from all of that work. And then the last piece is the kind of stakeholder group that will make up the community team. And we will be looking for three school committee members to join us. So with that.
So if you have interest in that, please let me know.
Questions?
So it seems daunting with all those dates up there. It's really not as daunting as it seemed. We were thinking of doing it right before the school committee meeting, so that we'd have an opportunity to work with the community groups, so the parents, the school committee members, to kind of streamline your night, so hopefully you'll, you'll join us. And there's just a couple of days in which you would be in the classrooms if possible, and there's an opportunity for you to work with the teacher team as well, that's doing some work at the middle school and the high school.
I have a question. So the design team, is that separate from the ILT teams? Or are we using the same groups as the ILT teams?
So we had, we had that conversation, actually, Mike and I did briefly, and I, you know, it could, it could work that there might be some overlap, but there doesn't have to be. So we want to be really mindful of, of that. I think, you know, when you go back to that same well all the time, that can be really daunting on the individual. However, there is some cross-pollination that could be like, or some kind of crosswalking from that work that could be really helpful, too. So I know as, you know, Mike moves forward to look at that, and who the staff, who might be the right fit for the staff and putting it out there to them, there'll be some discussions around that. There could be some overlap, but there doesn't have to be.
All right. I just, and I've shared this concern in the past, but I want the administrators as much as possible being in the buildings as much as possible.
Yes, we all do.
So I think, you know, with the focus schools and then going out to see what's out there with Portrait of a Graduate, I think we need to be cognizant of just having the administrators in their buildings, and I think we just, I just want to put that out there.
Absolutely.
I guess I'm processing what you just said, Jason, slowly today, but if our goal is to use the coaches to develop the best practices and develop our blueprint as it develops, why, why would this team run separately? You know, I think we already run a lot of things separately, so I guess my concern is, if we're saying that we need the coaches and the ILTs, because we're, we're, everybody's doing splintered things, but then yet this is now going to be another sort of splinter, I'm, I'm.
I would challenge that, thinking very respectfully, Tammy.
No, that's fine.
I don't think we do things separately at all, actually. I think we are very much aligned and coherent and consistent. And the reason I say that is because we have such a small team, and I, you know.
Which team are you talking about?
So, so there's really one. There's a leadership team for the district.
Leadership team, okay.
And each one of those members run their ILT, and that's it. That's what we have.
But the ILT was developed because we were doing, not every teacher was doing best practice.
Yep, that's right.
Things. That's what I'm talking about, splintered. There were splintered, we just, Jill just didn't use the word splintered, but said, everybody's doing their own thing, and we need to kind of come together to make consistent efforts in areas. My question is, is the intent that, of what the ILT team's purpose is different than what this community team would be doing?
I'm going to try to answer that, if I can.
Sure, sure.
Because I see this as completely different. I don't see this as school-based instructional. I see this as, when we're talking in Blackstone Millville, these are the kind of people who are engaged in our society, engaged in our community, engaged in their own education, and how do we get them there is the day-to-day stuff that, you know, the teachers, but why we need to get them there? This is strategic planning, if you will, from an educational focus, as opposed to saying, you know, it's a new way, I think, of looking at our, at our mission. It's a new way of look, of invigorating and generating some excitement in our communities about what education should be and needs to be, so that we have graduates who are proud of themselves. Not that we're, I mean, we are proud of them regardless of what they do, but are proud of themselves, have a state, I mean, this, if you look at this, this is not, I mean, it's, yes, it's some teachers, but it's some students. I mean, I'd love to see a fourth grader or a fifth grader who has an opportunity to say, you know, and probably people aren't even thinking that way outside of the box, but has an opportunity to say, jeez, you know, this is what I, I think school is for me, and this is how it can enhance my life. And, I mean, there's some pretty smart fourth and fifth graders that we have, and high school students, and, and this is bringing, you know, community members, this is bringing a big focus to say, what is our vision? What is our mission? But not from a strategic vision and mission, but from a really global, why do we do what we do?
So I love this. I'm wondering why the I, people from the ILT team aren't part of this. If we are pushing forward, we've spent money on these coaches, we're saying that they, they're bringing value to the educational process, whether it's project-based learning or not. Why would it be a separate entity than our, our vision for this group? This is great. I love all these community members. I love all the premise of that. My question is not, why do we have this group and not see the value of this group? My question is, if we're now spending a lot of money on coaching and the development of best practice, what's in here can be best practice, and we're not saying it's separate. So, my question is, why, this is great, why aren't we combining the two pieces of the vision?
I think, don't, the ILTs would get us there. Aren't they telling us how to get here?
So, the instructional leadership teams, let's define what they do first. I think maybe that will help everybody kind of process through that piece of it. So, the instructional leadership teams are school-based teams that are working with their principals to develop an instructional focus for each school, which, you saw a couple in the spring, which are really anchored around problem solving. And that came from looking at student work. That came from looking at student data, authentic, right, like the day-to-day work and summative assessments, data assessments, internal assessments like STAR, those kinds of things. So, the teachers in each of the schools worked with the ILT and their principals to really develop those instructional focus areas. What they're doing now is helping to come to a place of a small set of instructional practices, like two to four instructional practices that they all commit to. And then, with that, developing an internal accountability system so that we can see if those instructional practices are making a difference in student learning or not. And so, while I would, I would agree completely that that work plugs into this, right? Because if we're talking about developing students' problem-solving skills and critical thinking skills, those anchor deeply into 21st century skills.
I was just going to say, if you look at the slide with the student...
It says it right there.
Everything you just said lends itself to those four premises.
And so, my comment about the teaming piece and the alignment piece, you know, all I'm saying by that is, I don't, I don't know that those, some of those folks won't be on this.
Right.
I'm not saying that they won't be. I guess what I'm saying is, I am, I am coming at this, and I know that Mr. Dudik is as well, from a place of kind of organic engagement, an authentic engagement in it and wanting to work with those folks that feel that they want to jump into this level of work. What will not happen, I know for certain, is that we'll have an instructional leadership team that develops a focus on problem solving with these two to four skills, and this team comes out with something that's so left of center that it doesn't make sense. And that's where I reference that small team piece, because when there's only a few of us, you know, I think there are seven of us in the leadership team, we're all involved in every, all of it. So, my notion on that was just that, by that nature, there is an embedded alignment that's going to just take place.
May I please add?
So, the work around the Portrait of a Graduate and then moving it into practice will actually feed the ILTs and the coaches' work going forward. So, right now, they're focusing on problem solving. But when this work is done, you're going to have a big picture of the competencies you want your graduates to leave your district with. And now, the ILTs and the coaches can work to get the skills that they need into the classroom. So, they'll play an important role in seeing it to practice. Right now, a lot of the work that is going to happen here is actually digging into, what are those competencies that BMR students should graduate with? And then, the ILT and the coaches will help to shape that going forward because they'll have the roadmap for the skills that they need to bring into the classrooms to meet those competencies.
Just one take here. So, I think in the years that I've been here, I've always been talking about what does teaching and learning look like? And I don't think that we've had a norm, norm definition of what that has been. So, when Dr. DeFalco came to me and said, Portrait of the Graduate, I said, yeah, that's, it's been on the plate for a lot of districts. We haven't tackled that yet, but I think this is a great platform for us to go and really examine so that when we have an eagle-eyed view of what our students should be by the time that they graduate, and we're examining that in pre-K and kindergarten and fourth grade and seventh grade and ninth grade, when we're talking about various best practices, there's a, and we ask the why question, we know the answer to that because we have an end goal. And for me, we've been really struggling with, or not struggling, but tweaking what our student-friendly focus is. So, at the high school, we're really talking about problem solving and, or embedding critical thinking skills to develop proficient problem solvers. So, now, we're looking at what is that student-friendly focus that really encompasses all that? And for me, and this is something I've thrown out to staff and students, is for me, the end-all, where do I want students to be in their educational journey? So, when I look at it, at it this way, and this is just my personal view, I look in, I look at it as, we want students to stay curious. So, they all come in, most likely to preschool, kindergarten, happy, excited, engaged, ready to go. And sometimes, that curiosity diminishes. So, we need to figure out what, how do we keep students curious? The other piece is thinking about, just thinking critically. And that just ties in directly to what our student-friendly focus is, or our instructional focus. But at the end, I want students to be empowered. And to me, when I think about being empowered, those are lifelong learners. And it's not, I just finished high school and I have my diploma, so let me just go and live the real world, or live in the real world. Or I have a student who goes to college, gets their four-year degree, and then doesn't think about how else they're going to be able to experience the world around them and discover it. So, the Portrait of the Graduate, to me, really helps transform what we're talking about, the why and the rationale behind it. And I'm really excited about getting into that work and looking at a team that truly encompasses K-12. Because I've been, you know, when we think about the NIESC accreditation, that was a high school committee, looking at what our core values are and learning expectations. We're taking this to another level where we're saying this is a district of one. This is 2,000-strong, and we're going to really identify, when students walk into the door as four, five-year-olds, what do they look like when they turn 18? And we're preparing them for a world and a career that we truly don't know about yet. But we're embedding those skills to have them be successful young adults in this community. So, that was just my two cents on that.
I just want to piggyback on what Mike said. I really appreciate that he says the why. And I was looking at this and saying, it really is all intertwined. We have the what, the how, the whole child, the community. This really is the why. And if we look at it from an instructional perspective, it's backwards design. When we have this full picture of exactly what we want that to look like, it helps guide the rest of the work to get there. So, I really, I think that's great. That's, that fifth piece is the why.
So, I just, Donna, if you could share with us, what does the learning tour look like for this?
So, we would, a learning tour, we could decide as a group what you wanted to see. I think it'd be really important to identify schools within your area that you want to see and maybe outside of it. It's just a matter of where the conversation goes, to see other schools that have done the Portrait of a Graduate work.
Have you worked with any in our area to, to work on their portrait?
Not in Massachusetts.
Okay.
But that's not saying, I mean, this is, Portrait of a Graduate's been around for a while, so I'm sure we could identify quite a few schools who have done, districts that have done this work.
So, that would be done collaboratively with the group put together?
The whole thing. I'm, I would just be the facilitator of the conversations, but it's actually your work, not mine.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay.
All right, one more question.
Okay.
What grade level, how low are you looking to go in the grade levels for the students?
To decide.
I love what Jason said with kindergarten. Those kids can probably articulate their reasoning with how to solve a math problem.
Yeah. Don't have to be there every day.
Hopefully, will demand teachers to teach them the way that they learn. And I would love for myself to engage with a first grader and ask them, what does learning look like? And how do we best support you in that process? And are you getting that right now? The answer is no. We need to go and hit the reset button and start fresh.
So, I wonder, I love that idea as well. I think a first grader might have a hard time sitting through a two-hour meeting before a meeting.
Probably past their bedtime.
I know some people, they have a hard time sitting through that. But I wonder if we think about how we, when we talk about bringing this back to the community, if we think about bringing this back to our schools and having conversations with our, even our youngest students about some of the things that we talked about, like, you know, we really want people who graduate from kindergarten, from fifth grade, from 12th grade, to have these skills and kind of do some activities with them that show those skills in action. I think that would be kind of cool.
Some more of that learning walk.
Yep.
Getting the data.
I think you had two amazing students right here.
Yeah.
Who could be on that committee and inform all of you of what's, how it's going.
And those two actually were in the focus groups for my, the entry work, and they are, they helped shape our blueprint. Yeah, I mean, they have, the kids know a lot about what we need to be doing different and what we do well.
It'd also be interesting to think about students who have graduated from BMR and maybe had struggles afterwards. My son is now a college graduate, but when he first left high school and he was in that clique of kids who just did like your son and they did it all right and they knew how to do school, I was so surprised when the first Christmas break of freshman year, how many of his friends came back from their colleges and had dropped out and were going to CCRI, the community college, for the following semester because they didn't, they didn't have the skills that they needed to actually do the work. And then, I think about like how, and over the last four years, what path some of those children have taken. And I wonder if we had really committed in our town to graduating all students with certain competencies, if that would have been the case.
And I, I think from my perspective, while I agree with you, a first grader probably couldn't sit through continued, continued meetings, I think sometimes we look to the best and the brightest and we pull those folks in. And I think maybe sometimes we need to look for, you know, the wanderers who will surprise us. I, I, every single day, am fascinated by the people who will step up when challenged. Every single day, I teach people who, you know, probably never thought they could sit in a classroom, but step up when challenged. And so, for me personally, I'd like to see a really diverse, you know, not to make it in a whole student group, but a really, you know, the people we wouldn't normally pick, the person who's not a team captain, person who's not a, you know, the conductor of the marching band or whatever you call the, people who get the high spots.
Well, and correct, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Correct me if I'm wrong. I'm viewing this team as the team that's driving the work, not necessarily they're making the decisions. Obviously, they'd be gathering feedback from other invested parties. And maybe the first graders can come for a part of the meeting. They don't have to sit for, they don't have to sit for two hours. So, I agree with you 100% Jean.
I think we could think about the number of students that we have on this as well. I mean, that was nice and tidy to do three, three, three.
Sure, sure.
I think we could rethink that as well. I'd actually like to take the feedback that you've given and play with the schedule a little bit to see how we can work some of these ideas in. We may have a really cool playdate.
There you go. There you go. All right. Anything else? Anyone? Okay. Well, thank you both.
Thank you both. concludes my report.
Okay. Again, I will repeat, though, if somebody has particular interest in this, from a school committee perspective, you know, we have several things on our plate and talked about those at our last workshop, but this will become a critical piece, so, as is our regional agreement committee. Please let me know. And I think, Erin Worth, you...
I always have the pleasure of tying things up with the business report.
You do.
I will keep it brief this evening. In fact, this is really mainly an introduction of the reports that Dr. DeFalco and I are going to be using to present to the committee and also using to project where things are going with respect to the finances. The first report that you have listed is the total revenue report. It says FY '20 revenue review at the top of it. We found that in the reports that we presented, or I presented last year, salaries were broken out and the revenues were not entirely covered based on grants that may not have been funded for or other sources of income that weren't funded for in the initial reports. So, this is every source of income that we envisioned coming into the district, and it has every, most of them, as you can see, have a budgeted amount, and that will bring you to the total anticipated revenue, which is in red, kind of halfway through. That's the $24,789,123. This, this document is live, however, there are going to be some changes that take place. I can tell you right now, in case anyone's looking, the collected year-to-date says nothing on the assessments, and the towns did pay their first bills. We just had, we've had some transition in the bookkeeping position, so that just needs to be updated. And then, on the bottom section, there are revenues that we don't budget for because there's really no way of indicating how, how much they'll be.
Sure.
A question I would actually have for the committee is, I have the school cafeteria revenue listed at the bottom. After speaking with Maureen, our new food service director, we may put together a separate food service budget to present more regularly, but it's actually not part of the school committee budget.
Correct.
So, I think some of those things get confusing when something's not part of it and we start looking at, well, what's the 24, you know, 711? How does this play? And it's $700,000 more, and it's, well, that was never really part of it. They have their own separate fund and budget, so.
Okay.
Any questions on this revenue report? Similarly, if you take a look at the expenditure review, this, this combines the salary review that we used to do and the expenditure by function. It has every single possible expenditure that we're going to have, what has been budgeted for it. If you take a look, write down the FY '20 budget column, that's the number that we were looking at, the $24,771,000. And that's where we're going to keep tying our projections back to. You will see a little bit of change in this document, even on the budget right now, because what I will say is, if you look at the 7,000 line, which is toward the bottom, it says grant expenditures. I haven't had the opportunity to allocate, we haven't identified everything that we want to allocate towards the grants. So, there are things that are budgeted in instructional supplies or in benefits that we're going to move to the grant line. So, that will, that will show more expenditures from the grant and a little bit less expenditures from specific lines, but you'll notice that the total bottom line will never change. We do that because we weren't 100% sure of what the amounts were or what people were returning in salaries to account for. The other thing, if you are looking and getting very excited, the current available balance line says $3 million. Again, if you look, $573,000 of that is from grants that we haven't expended, but we're going to expend that.
Right.
Another thing that contributes to that, if you look at the salary columns just now, we have positions that haven't been filled. And so, those, those salaries haven't been encumbered because they're not appointed to specific people. So, right now, the actual numbers are a little deceptive, but the focus should be on the budget, the process. And as we move forward, Dr. DeFalco and I will analyze it regularly, and the projection column, you'll see start to change.
Just a question on that. So, if this person hasn't been hired, am I to assume that there's a sub in the position or is it not positions that are, require subs?
It varies.
So, if it requires subs, are then the sub salaries encumbered in the sub line?
The sub, the sub, sub salaries aren't encumbered because we don't really know how much they'll end up being. So, depending on, these would more than likely be short-term substitute teachers because we're looking to fill these positions quickly. we're looking to fill these positions quickly. So we've budgeted a certain amount for subs and that is, that's budgeted. I'll try to.
Well, it's over encumbered right now, so I just.
That could be, that could be part of it.
But does that account for the?
It may be, some of that, yes, exactly. Some, some of that may get moved back to the regular salary line.
Okay.
It becomes a normal teacher. Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I didn't realize that was over encumbered right now. That's a good point.
It's a big red number for the first.
It's only, it's only a few, it's only a few of them now.
Yeah, the one, the one $4 one is the one that's.
I think we'll, I think we'll, we'll get by.
Discount, $4 discount. I know, I'm sure it was. Tax, tax.
Well, and again, I, I would like to point out too, if you notice the very bottom, even though there is a little, you know, we're focusing on these red numbers, which are not even over $10,000 or $15,000. The two big ones that we struggled with last year were the 9,200 and the 9,300 lines and that was because we never actually budgeted for what they were going to cost. We just said, we're gonna offset them with circuit breaker or we're gonna offset them with a grant, but we never said what we were really gonna spend. And now you can see, we plan on spending eight, almost $800,000 on, you know, the non-public programs and collaboratives are gonna cost, you know, $350,000. And those may change still, as everyone knows, based on individual students moving in or out, but that's why there is some circuit breaker padding that's there. Are there any questions on the expenditure review? And you've also been given the personnel changes as of September 1st. There's very little change since the major report at the beginning of the year and as always, we don't discuss these positions publicly, so if anyone has any questions or needs more information, please just email me.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Is there anyone who has a school committee forum issue they would like to bring up or?
I don't, it's not an issue.
No, or, you know, just. Statement, comment.
We actually have two, two people in the district that have recently retired and I just wanna recognize them. I know it wasn't off time because they retired, not at the end of the year. So I just wanna wish Barbara Finn, Campopiano, who is a Title I, the Title I teacher at the complex, she's been there for a number of years, and also Karen Bro, who was the secretary at the AFM complex. And I know that she will be definitely missed by my three boys and she's a big Red Sox fan, so we just wanna wish them well in their retirement and all the best.
When was her last day?
I think it was last week.
It was Friday.
I'm not sure about. Little thing on Twitter, I think. They had a little thing. Not sure about Barbara Finn, but she's been there for quite, yeah.
And they'll be here at the next meeting.
Oh, good, good. I'm glad. That's it, that's all I have.
Anybody else? School years have started well for everyone and students are happy, right?
I, I will just speak because I think it has crept up on us. I just wanna make sure everyone knows that the, the BMR band home show is September 21st and it is at 2:00 PM in Bellingham this year.
Oh.
In the past few years, we've been in Midway. And I'm certain that the entire school committee, as well as administrators, are invited. So if you need a ticket, let me know and I will gladly get you your ticket.
Is that two weeks?
It's next Saturday.
That's next Saturday.
And we don't have another meeting before that, so it is moved up to 2:00 PM so they can finish before the mosquitoes come out. BMR always goes on last at their home show, so they will probably be on around 4:30-ish is my guess. If you're running late, you'll, you can still catch them. And the show is phenomenal this year, so I hope to see you guys.
I love the costumes. I've seen pictures and.
The whole story.
What is the story? Steal the apple? Well, I listened. Oh, take a bite. Okay, I listened.
And the apple is, yeah, I mean, not giving away their secrets.
Got it.
The music is unbelievable. I mean, I've recorded them a few times, a video, but I will just actually turn it on and put my earphones in and not watch them, but listen to the music and it's, yeah, it's moving. So I hope to see you there.
All right. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, to move into executive session and adjourn, adjourn the meeting from executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call?
Yes.
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 All right. Our next meeting is September 26th and there's a Regional Agreement Amendment Committee, I'm trying to not use the acronym, on the 25th, right?
Yes, the Wednesday.
We're gonna switch rooms?